...council meeting of 2018, if you can believe that. I'd like to call Mr. Sullivan down to offer our invocation, and I also would like to introduce two cadets with us tonight that will be leading us in our pledge of allegiance, Cadet Daniels and Cadet DeBolt from the JROTC program, Carl Albert High School. They're both seniors. They plan to go to Rose State after graduation, and then they've got aspirations of doing other things beyond that. So I'd like to welcome you and thank you for being here this evening. So with that being said, Mr. Sullivan, you want to lead us in the invocation? Please stand.
Gracious Father in heaven, we're thankful to be in your presence tonight, Lord, and we are thankful for your Holy Spirit that guides us. Father, I ask that your spirit be upon this meeting tonight, Lord, and the decisions that this council has before them. Father, give them wisdom and discernment, and Father, I just pray that their decisions will be beneficial to the whole of this community. We thank you for this wonderful community that we enjoy to, that we have to live and work and play. Our great state and our great nation, and Father, we're thankful for those who are defending this nation tonight. Protect them and give them comfort and peace in their families while they're away as well. Thank you so much for your son, Jesus, and the blood that was shed on our behalf, and we ask all these favors in his name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a few community announcements. First off, being this is the last council meeting in 2018, first council meeting in 2019, we'll be changing times. Council meetings will start at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 next year, so you might want to make note of that if you have any business with the council. Storyland Christmas down Charles Johnson Park in Town Center will have an all-day affair Saturday with choirs, different bands, and other things going on, so if you have some time, please go down and visit that. On Friday night, KOMA will be doing a live broadcast from Storyland Christmas, touting all the events that's coming up on Saturday. I do want to remind you, on 21st of January, the annual Martin Luther King Breakfast will be held at the Reed Center, starting at 8:00. Tickets are on sale for $20, and there's several venues you can get tickets, along with our own councilwoman, Allen, has tickets if you would care to purchase one at $20 apiece.
Will you also mention that they can purchase tickets at the Midwest City Community Center, and you can see Paula or either one of the staff, and you can purchase tickets there also?
Thank you. Let's see, any other announcements?
Would mention, Mayor, that with Christmas coming, we will have an alteration on our sanitation service. If you are scheduled to get your sanitation service on December 25th, it will occur on the 26th on Wednesday instead of Tuesday, and then also on January, the January 1st service will occur on January 2nd. And then the transfer station and recycling center will both be closed the Saturday before Christmas and the Saturday after Christmas.
22nd and 29th.
22nd and 29th. Both. Compost facility as well as the transfer station. I'm sorry, Paul, what?
Compost facility as well as the transfer station.
Right, right. Both compost and transfer station will be closed.
Okay, anything else from around the horseshoe?
I would just like to thank all of the city employees, especially our own Jill Donaldson and Lisa Harper, who are working to do the gifts for children and families from our community, as well as our neighborhood services, who are doing a food drive for all of their generosity this Christmas season to members of our community.
Thank you. Mike, how much food did we collect on our food drive this year?
Twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars of food that was collected through our collection at Sam's wholesale during November, so, and that will go to provide food for about 200 families in our community, so that's a huge drive every year, and our city employees, the best in the world, put that together and distribute that, so, and plus, we've also got other families that we do adopt that the city employees provide for, so we are a giving community by every means. With that being said, anything else before we get into the agenda? All right, ladies and gentlemen, when we move into the consent agenda of our agenda, these items are placed on the consent agendas, so the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council or the members of the audience, wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. That being said, chair and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number three, with C3.
I have a motion and a second. The motion is to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item three. With that being said, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Discussion item three?
This is discussion consideration of one, passing and approving a resolution of support for the nomination of Mayor Matthew D. Dukes II for election to the District 8 seat on the Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Municipal League, and two, declaring such nomination to be for the benefit of the city of Midwest City and other municipalities within the district, and declaring the mission of the Oklahoma Municipal League to be for the public purpose.
The chair passed the gavel to Vice Mayor Burns to conduct the vote.
Need a motion on this?
A motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes?
Thank you for your support in that endeavor. We now move into the discussion items of our agenda.
First item is discussion consideration regarding a public presentation by Seltzer Schaefer Architects from Tulsa, Oklahoma. Chief, you want to introduce?
The guests tonight, they'll introduce themselves and start the presentation.
Good evening. My name is Hank Speaker. I'm a principal and partner with Seltzer Schaefer Architects. Thank you on behalf of the firm for allowing us to come talk to you about your exciting project, tell you a little bit about the firm. So we'll just advance slides. So we want to talk about who we are, showcase some of our experience, and then talk to you specifically about our experience with animal shelter projects. So with us tonight, as I mentioned, I'm Hank Speaker, I'm a principal in charge. I've been with the firm over 21 years. It's been the only home I've ever known outside of Oklahoma State University, and it's been a great, great experience there. With me have Brian Thomas, who is actually a mentor of mine, who's been with the firm, yeah, since the beginning, and so anyways, it's been a great working relationship with him, and not with us is Jason Kofer. He had a family emergency, but he would also be on the project team. Excellent. So we're 28 passionate individuals, ranging in different levels of experience, ranging from project architects to interior designers, to graphic designers, intern architects, and we all office in a wonderful location we call the Ice House. Next slide. So this is the Ice House. We practice what we preach. We took an old, late 1920s Ice House and turned it into our office, and anyways, you can see what it looks like on the next slide. It's very light-filled, open office environment where collaboration is the key. That really is the success to our work, is having an open studio environment where we can collaborate and learn from each other. So we're a full-service design firm. We offer everything from pre-design, which can be facility assessments, programming, design documentation, all the way through the entire process, and so having that exposure makes us well-versed in all aspects of architecture and design. So our experience is going to range with a lot of different project types. We're not specialists, we're generalists, and we find that that gives us a unique advantage in the fact that we're exposed to a lot of different building types of technology, user groups, and we're able to basically cross-pollinate ideas. So we may be learning something about K-12 schools that we can apply to an office building, and it really makes us a thought leader in what we do. And so you're going to see some of our photos from some of our projects, ranging from educational, doing work currently in Stillwater, Oklahoma. Brian's there at least once a week. Do cultural, like the Hardisty Ballet Center that we did in Broken Arrow, to an art center we did in downtown Broken Arrow, and then also into medical health and wellness, like this clinic we did north of Tulsa. Then we do adaptive reuse. We love going into old buildings. You know, Will Rogers said he never met a man he didn't like. I've said, "I never met a building I didn't like," and so we love breathing new life into old buildings, and then also pushing what we can do with office, office buildings, incorporating new thoughts with open planning and collaborative workspaces. And then interior renovations. You know, we love going in, again, kind of trailing on that adaptive reuse, coming in and revisioning what interior spaces can be, and so we have dedicated staff of interior designers, and we offer that as a design service, where we believe the interior architecture works holistically with the exterior architecture as well. In recreation, we're working with several municipalities surrounding Tulsa. We're working with the city of Broken Arrow on a crime lab. We're working with the city of Claremore on an outdoor park festival. We do retail and urban infill, like this box yard, which is actually a shipping container, an outdoor shipping container, retail center in downtown Tulsa, which is really the first of its kind in that area. And then most recently is an incubator kitchen concept where local entrepreneurs can come together and try their hand in food service, and seeing how they could operate a restaurant before they venture out onto their own.
So like Hank said, I've been with the firm. I've got over 25 years' experience as an architect, and I've had the blessing to work for the same individual that founded Seltzer Schaefer my whole career with that, but over it's led me to a distinct path. And my wife always asks me what I got most out of architecture, and it's kind of two things. It's the people, but then the exposure to jobs. From day one, my first day in the job, and I got to sit in a surgery room to watch surgeons do surgery, and afterwards, they asked me a question if I saw anything, and I asked, "Well, why do the extra people in one room versus the other?" And had to do with whether you're a right-handed or left-handed surgeon. And I said, "Well, can't we just design two rooms, that one's outfitted for a left-handed and a right, and save you two staff?" But it's been this observation to learn all the different aspects that are out that we bring in. So even though we're generalists, also in my career, I've developed an expertise on a lot of building types on there with that. So just a little bit, just talking about particularly this product you've asked us to discuss with you tonight, is animal shelters. Sometimes we refer to as animal welfare, adoption centers, different names, but for 13 years, we've been designing products that reflect our clients' needs. I don't want to take credit for the success of those entirities, it's the conversations we've had with our clients. But we had the luxury of 13 years ago, when we did our first project with Edmund, they'd solicited proposals from another architects. We thought we were coming down to interview on a medical facility, because that's what we had done the first 12 years of our practice quite a bit. They said, "No, we're here to talk about an animal shelter." And having I hinted at it beforehand, I reached out across to some architects the team with and done that, and I came across an individual called David Carbo. He was the director at the Nebraska Humane Society, and he said, and I was just calling him for a reference check, and he goes, "You don't need another architect. You guys know how to do architects." He goes, "You need someone that can help guide the client on what their procedures are, and also help guide you on the design of the building." And he goes, "I have the playbook." He goes, "I had a donor that flew us to 30 facilities this last year to go look at and ask questions across the table. What did you learn from what you just built?" So we came out with Edmund right out of the chute to have an expertise that only advised us on building design, but also the client of Edmund of facility management. And that started us off on that. At the same time, he said, "There's no way you're going to be able to build a shelter for $1.2 million," and we built one, it won awards, and to this day, if you go up there, it still looks and is maintained as well. And a lot of that was pulling from our resources, what we learned in other industries of, at the time, using epoxy flooring was unheard of in animal shelters, but we'd use it in high industrial buildings, had durability, it met the needs. So there's things that we pull from those arenas. But through that, we're familiar with national trends, what's going on. I struggle handing keys over, but I go back to these facilities almost on a yearly basis to go, "What have we learned this year? How's it holding up?" So we've got this feedback loop, and each one over this 13 years is built on the success of the previous one with that. We've attended national conferences. I got to go a few years ago to a national conference, and to attest to some of the things they were saying that were trends, we'd done an Edmund eight years earlier with that. So we've always felt that we've really stayed attuned to what's going on in the industry. Also, the majority of our staff is passionate about animals. We have rescues ourself. It's an industry that we go, the ability to connect an animal with a future family and give joy across there, you just, you can't do that. So we're familiar with adoption procedures. One of the things about animal shelters that I think is unique, it's a combination of a jail, it's a combination of a medical clinic, and it's a combination of an adoption center. And so to blend those three into a facility is always the challenge of these facilities, but we've done it time and time again, and it's been because of the conversations with our client and their community, along with what we bring to the table. Go to the next slide. National guidelines that are out there, we're very familiar with the, in 2010, the veterinarians produced some standards. Probably half the book has to do with procedures, but we would sit down and review that with your staff, because sometimes the context that they're coming from, this needs some exposure to what is going on in the industry, as well as to another, but it's a great set of guidelines that's proven its well with that NACA, which is the National Animal Control Agency with that. Edmund got honored with that when it came out of the chute, but we stay attuned to those because municipal shelters are different than, some of these I'll show you, which might be a nonprofit, no-kill type shelter, adoption. We cover all those. So we're familiar with that, but the key thing that we understand about these facilities, it's about maximizing, enhancing, and reducing the stress of both the animals and the staff, but increasing the safety of both the staff and animal, and ultimately increasing the perception of the public that this is a place, a community place, that you can come and adopt a family, and it's a resource for the community, and to break that stigmatism of, "You guys don't have an animal shelter to kill animals. You have an animal shelter to get them off the street and hopefully find them a home." And these facilities I'm going to show you are doing that. The first one, like I said, in Edmund, back in 2005, we got awarded that project. It was in concert with a few other projects going on in the, originally it was on a completely different site, and I had the privilege and the opportunity to sit in the meeting on the planning, and they had this little piece of land of where it's worked, and I go, "Is there any reason why the animal shelter couldn't be on the way to the public service facility?" They left a room, started talking, about a week later, we got a call, and we go, "We're going to move the building to this site, because we can maximize the bond dollars. The roads, the infrastructure were going to be carried on there," but it allowed us to maximize it. Also, they had requirements for this. They wanted the brick and the green roof and some of the other elements to be consistent on the facilities on that site. So architecture's a small world. It happened to be one of my classmates was working on some of the other ones, and so we coordinated along with the city to make sure the pallet of materials were set, and that was going to be the standard for all the products that were being built out there at the time. So with this, it has delightful spaces. That back, at that time, to introduce what that space is, is called a get acquainted room. It's up near the front, it's open, it's light. You can see pets being interacted with. It's near the front desk. Also flexible, if there's no one in there, they can use it as a sort of the shopping display case, where they can move animals up front and have them exposed, and the success of that is animals that are usually up there get adopted a lot sooner than the ones back in the crates. The kennel systems on the left is a public information area. It's got a nice skylight, it's got the cattery beyond for the cats, the little cage out in the middle for various animals that they want to put out there to test. But on the right, the kennel systems are key to the success of this. If anything's a no-compromise space, those are the spaces that can drain your funds if not designed right, and I'd say the best thing we ever did was coming out of the chute. So the things that we thought from architecture and medical facilities would have been the right thing for an animal shelter, that wasn't true, and we got taught very quickly in early design of how to design those, and little things of, there's a valve on the wall that we can turn, and it allows it to flush the drain line out. By the introduction of that, there's not clogs in the pipe system. Once a week, they do that, but it also flushes all the disease around in a more efficient manner than staff going around and speeding what used to be about a two-hour exercise gets done in about 20 minutes with that. So different kennels, but we've had, it's always an honor and a blessing to sit there and 15 years later have a client that you interact with, call up and go, "We're ready to do the next phase." When we did Phase 1, we knew there were budget challenges, but what we like to do in these facilities is vision with you. We know what the needs are today, we want to look out five years, and we want to dream and go 10 or 15 years, where do you think it is? And incorporated the design flexibility, so that we don't close doors on this. And we knew on that day that they'd met the core issues that they needed to, but the adoption piece, the surgical piece, future growth, they just weren't able to afford at the time, and now to come back, and that's what we're working on them right now, is about a three-and-a-half million dollar expansion to the facility. That's going to go out to bid here in a few weeks. So for your project, you know, starting in the first year, we're going to have numbers fresh off the street in this market right now, that's, it's a little challenging to predict on there with that, and be able to sense what the market's going to be for a facility like this. The other one that we followed on that was Broken Arrow Animal Shelter. What made that unique is the director of the facility came from a construction background. So now we started the talk on being more innovative, and so there's things that we did on that that were us sitting around using his expertise and ours and going, "If we did this, would it improve, reduce stress, improve safety?" Nine out of 10 of those hit it out of the park. There was a few that we sat there and went, "No, it didn't really do what we wanted to do." Wasn't any worse, but it didn't accomplish that, and to this day, him and I have a relationship to do lessons learned. But this one was right outside the police station. The neatest thing I could say is, on the day it opened, when kids were walking, standing at the front, and a few kids were walking up, and one of them, I happen to know, they had adopted a child earlier on, and they go, "Are we going to go adopt another child?" And the mother goes, "Why do you think that?" And they go, "Well, this feels like the place that we went to get Kathy." And I go, "For somebody to walk into an animal shelter and think they're going to go get a human interaction, that means the team, the client and us included, designed a space that's inviting, friendly, and engaging, because you'd walk into this and you don't smell animals when you walk into it, and we've designed it that way as you move through the facility, to make it comfortable for humans and comfortable for animals." Inside, just further evolution of the get acquainted spaces, this one's off the lobby. The benches are now raised off the floors, they can mop underneath them, little subtleties like that, but there's constantly animals engaging in there. You walk in, and you, I mean, this is just a photo, I happened to walk in right before we did that, just to see what was going on, and I mean, how delightful is it to see someone interacting with an animal? It just sets the tone when you walk in. The next one, down the hallways, you know, where you place windows and doors really impacts the stress level. These are all set up that the animals in their cages can't see through the windows, so they don't get the distraction of getting stressed out to see people, but you're able to see into this building, you can see natural daylight with that. The kennel systems, they're always evolving, but similarly, they stay here, but we've designed these so that on day one, they come in kind of a kit of parts that they can expand and grow with that. So they're able to reconfigure these if they need to with it, but it gives capacity and cleanliness. Once again, you know, 15, 20 minutes, these are cleaned. Disease is probably 90% reduction because of these systems. Cats, cats like to be seen, and then they also not like to be seen, but with that, we've learned, this is along the hallway side, so it allows them to put cats that you can walk in, and as much as I design these facilities, I'm allergic to cats, so to walk in that room is always a challenge, but I can sit out here and engage and enjoy the animals from the hallway, at the same time, you can see a few of them, they're sitting there observing me. But we've also learned on the back wall, we have a spot for cats that may not like to be that, and they can be back in a spot where they're removed from the public eye, controlled access into there, so that they can still be adopted, but it gives us flexibility. One of the more recent ones is Peaceful Valley Animal Adoption Shelter. This is a little different, it's not a municipal shelter. This is a group that, their focus is to get animals off the street, resocialize them, and get them, adopt them, but also they are able to transport these animals to states that have these neuter laws. Surprisingly, what's come true is what they predicted, that there's a shortage of animals in some of these states. So it shows you the power of the laws that we have in there to help impact this need. And so they're able to get these animals reconditioned, re-acclimated, working with humans, with other animals, and then move them across to where there's a need and a demand for them. But you see the variety of character. These buildings take on the characters of the clients and the communities that they're in. They're delightful, this one, and a lot of the graphics, and it's set in this gorgeous grove of trees. It just really said to everybody, it needs to feel like a farmhouse in the community, and the front porch, you think of a porch, and they wanted to feel comfortable with the rocking chairs and that, that you can come up, take an animal, and come outside and interact with it and drive up, but it's a reflection of their personalities. We listen, we really wanted to capture the spirit of who they are. But these have outdoor runs, so there's the ability to take the dogs outside. You see the double fencing, there's things that we've learned that a dog will get out. And so it's to make the stress levels, there's the area they may be in, but there's a second fence that allows that to be contained in case they do get loose with that. So over the, kind of to recap, over the 13 years, what we've come in is, we came with a background in medical when we started the firm, and we built on that with animal shelters, but we were able to, like Hank says, the different agencies of other clients, we've done with medical centers, early childhood, adoption centers, education. Animal shelters are no longer the kind of come, pick up your animal, go. They really are becoming a resource of the community. Some of the newer ones that I've done that, or other projects that we didn't show, is for Pampa, Texas, I did a facility where they didn't know where they wanted to put it, and so we started off with site assessment, because location, location, location is key for these. You want to put it where it has availability and convenience to users. So we assessed that, and on that one, we ended up settling, they had a ballpark that they were struggling what to do with, and I said, "Well, we could take half the cloverry, put the product on there, and have that there, and then we can use the other field for a dog park, and then we can reactivate your softball games that they would have once a week." They had family softball night. And I go, "Why don't you host that on here?" And now we've activated this site. Adoptions went through the roof with it all, because they'd want to volunteer on game night, go over and get a dog and walk it around, and naturally, you fall in love with the dog or cat and you would adopt it. So we start all the way on that early process with visuals. You guys have already passed a bond, some communities we have, they've got to raise money, but ultimately, we want to be transparent and communicate, and I think that's been the takeaway that we've had over these years, is we've got the understanding of how to do it, we're going to bring that to the table for you, we're going to expose you that, but also, we're going to ask lots of questions, because we want to understand your community, your goals, and where you want to see this going. So kind of an overview, it's a lot to talk about in a few minutes, so I'd open up for any questions.
Well, I'm glad you got the holistic approach, and I'm not sure what Chief Clave has explained to you, but this is, you said we just passed a bond, this is the first project, so that ought to tell you where it rates. There's a lot of animal lovers in Midwest City, a lot of them on this council, and if you've been out to our animal shelter, or animal detention facility, whatever you want to call it right now, it's not anywhere near state-of-the-art. You know, we've got a location pretty well picked out that is going to be the centerpiece in Midwest City. So no pressure on you guys.
We're up to the challenge, all these.
It's going to be, it's going to be probably the heaviest-traveled, not only vehicle, but pedestrian in the city, and you'll get exposure, positive and negative, so we hope that it's all positive, because this is an important project.
And one of the things we'll talk about site is, there's indoor, indoor/outdoor kennels, there's a mix of kennels, and when we look at the site, the analysis we're going to do is, we would come back with, I like to call it the shopping list, and what we like to do is to come back and say, "Option one, all this mix of kennels indoors, here's pros and cons that we see. Option two, option three." Two, there's cost. We always come with cost. Design in a vacuum does no one any good, is to sit there and go, "Here's the differences, here's both front cost and long-term operating." Here's both front cost and long-term operating." With that, and the kennel placement, like you say, is location, 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 but you also got to be sensitive to the neighbors on there and the aspect of animals being stored, and there's noise concerns and visibilities. But we've worked all the options, and there's always a unique solution that will be unique to you guys that'll meet, I mean, they always meet the goals.
I want to answer the question. So, your animal shelters that you build, are they like one-stop adoption? Everything is in one building?
Yeah, it varies, but 90%, all of them are, first thing they got to do is they're charged because they're all, all of them except for the Peaceful Valley are underneath the police department. So, they've got the role of, they basically need to accept all the animals in there. And then, from there, identify the ones that are adoptable, and then ultimately have enough capacity and timeframe to give the opportunity for the reconnection of that. Some of them have surgical, some don't. Some of them, we set the option up. Edmund, originally, we had a spare, we did a storage room that we sized after meeting with OSU's veterinarian to go, "What's the smallest practical space that you need for a surgical, one operator?" They told us the size, they told us the power. So, on day one, we built a room, we put power in the wall, and it was storage for the first 10 years, and now, it translates. So, we didn't close the door. Broken Arrow is that same way. He takes the money from his spay and neutering and put it in the fund, and he goes, "Someday, I'm going to have enough to go ahead and outfit that for surgical." So, surgical is there, but it's growing. There's partnerships that they work with the local vets to be able to come out and do that. Edmund, right now, that's a lot of what we're introducing, is the surgical aspect. Adoption is the huge piece. And with that, usually, a space that gets incorporated, or it's definitely planned for as a community space, one that most of them, a minimum, it's to go, "What if the local, you know, what if you guys wanted to meet out there in a group of 10 to 15" where they can get local organizations that can come out and hold a meeting, which puts traffic in, but then, it can quickly convert into, if it's Dog Adoption Day or Cat Adoption Day, it's a multi-purpose room, or it can be used for dog training. So, the facilities that are thinking, where we have a lot of discussions, is how do you set that up to keep the doors open to be a community hub? City of Tulsa, right now, we've had preliminary conversations on a master plan of a space that, when you adopt your dog, you're going to come back, and that's where you're going to do the dog training and the partnerships to get a local, another nonprofit to come in and utilize that space for pennies on the dollars. It generates a little bit of revenue, but it's now becomes a resource to go, "I adopted my animal there. I can go for veterinarian advice. I can go there for support. I can go there for community." So, they really become an outreach. And the key of that is, like you say, if it's in a location where you can do that, it's great to put that. I've had a shelter that was on the edge of town still to say, "Everybody's going to go from here and drive seven miles to go use the community room." It's a challenge, but if you're in what you just described, you're going to have the traffic. It's going, what else do you, how do you think people might use this besides just the animal shelter? So, you're right there.
Any other questions? Thank you for that presentation. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you for coming up here and doing that.
Thank you for the opportunity. And when he first called, I go, "I never like to work with a client without meeting them face-to-face." And I said, "If there's ever the opportunity just to come down and say hi, we'd love to do that." And we really, once again, want to say thank you for the opportunity just to come speak with you guys tonight about this. It's an amazing facility, and to come out of the chute and do something that is going to impact that, we're ready for the challenge, and we won't disappoint.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
There's no action needed on that particular discussion item, so we'll move into discussion item number two of the agenda.
This is discussion consideration of establishing an animal ordinance review committee to review and make recommendations regarding Midwest City's animal ordinances relating to Chapter Eight, Animals and Fowl, including Articles 1 through 9, consisting of, and the committee would consist of three council persons and a citizen from each ward nominated by their council member.
So far, we have the nominations for Ward One as Amy Otto, Ward Two, Lindsay Hetchison, Ward Three, Kim Templeman, and Ward Four, Sidney Boyd.
And then, we also have the three council persons already identified, that being Council Person Allen, Council Person Moore, and Council Person Bowen.
So, do we vote on the whole group?
Yes, sir.
So, the three council people shouldn't vote?
No, they can vote on this. I mean, it's just establishing the committee.
Okay. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Motion is to approve the council and also the appointees. That being said, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Now, ladies and gentlemen, move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? That being said, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the trustees can, by unanimous consent, approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of trustees or the members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We now move into the new business public discussion of the authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we do have a executive session attached to this agenda. The chair would entertain a motion to recess from this agenda and come back to it in a few minutes.
Motion to recess this agenda, executive session.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are hereby recessed from the authority. I now call to order the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda attached to this agenda. These items are placed on the consent agendas so the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval, all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We do have one discussion item.
This is discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. No action is necessary on this.
No action needed, and we now move into the new business public discussion of the hospital authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we do have a executive session attached to this agenda, and I would entertain a motion to recess and come back to it.
Motion to recess.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are hereby recessed. Now, call to order the Midwest City Special Utilities Authority. We have one discussing, discussion item on this agenda.
This would be a discussion consideration of approving the minutes from the July 24, 2018 meeting.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.